The February third regular meeting of the zoning commission. I taking a quick look up and down, I can see that we have everybody here tonight. There's no appointment of alternates. But in terms of our agenda tonight, we have just one item to wrestle with. It's here somewhere.
You wanna do the minutes first, sir, from the twenty second?
Where we?
Wanna do the minutes from the twenty second?
I didn't see any minutes for the twenty seconds.
Right.
Somebody who had read.
Minutes for the sixth.
Did I not send them?
Yeah, minutes for the twenty second.
No, I saw them.
Yeah, I got them.
Yeah.
So, somebody who read them, wanna make a comment maybe need for any corrections or changes?
It looked okay to me.
Yeah, I didn't see.
Just have a quick question, George, if line twenty seven, if there's a extension, is that still considered a unanimous vote?
I think probably technically not. I think you're correct.
Maybe just say the motion carried five zero.
Okay, we can make that change.
Move that the minutes from the January twenty second, twenty twenty five regular meeting be approved as amended.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the January twenty second meeting. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. And those abstentions because they didn't read the minutes. Right now. That's it. The minutes are approved. So here we go on the toolkit. There's a lot of material and we've had a lot of conversations about this, so. I don't want anybody to sort of end up feeling like they didn't get a fair shot at saying what's on your mind on anything that we're about to sort of take up. But my thought is to do this in sections, you know, there's four areas of change in this text amendment. So my thought was deal with them one at a time and.
Mr. Chairman, let me just make two points since it's been a while since we've done a public hearing and closed the public hearing and then kind of delayed and had discussion about it. But I do wanna just remind everybody what kind of the major rules and guidelines are, just so we remember. Public hearing is closed, that means that unseated alternate may not participate in discussion. Staff may only answer questions to provide clarification. Or to review previously presented material. So no in- no new information or no new public input can be received once the public hearing is closed.
Have we always done that with the unseated alternate? I always thought that they could comment if they didn't vote.
Since the public hearing is closed, they may not participate.
Really?
Yeah, that statute has always said that. They may always participate up until the public hearing is closed.
But they're only participating in the public hearing.
Right.
Okay.
Just heads up.
So my point was just that we have a variety of information sources and I think it's fair to say that either all over or just about everything that we've seen to date on this topic is available. So most of it's on George's computer, but I don't, wow, okay. And so I guess my thought is to take these things one at a time, as I said, and to deal with kind of a look back at what what are the changes that are associated with that area of the text amendment. And then we we have the memo that we always, it's dated December second. And it was in your, in front of your seat. But the December second memo has all of the I mean, it has information on all four of the areas of change. It has background information on what what's to be changed and some of the rationale or the rationale. And then it gives suggested text amendment draft language. And as is our custom, the draft motions are to the favor of approval. As is our custom for all the motions that come from staff, for our convenience, we're free to make changes and edits and vote however in the end we want. But they do come from a standpoint of support of the applicant. In this case, the applicant being ourselves, so it's a little unusual. At this point, I'm looking at the December twelfth memo. The December twelfth memo starts with the topic of the inclusionary housing, affordable home, set aside. So it's a topic of inclusionary housing. You'll see it with a quick flip through, the ADO is the next section, then the RA, and then work workforce housing is on coming to pass. Now, it's only my idea, the sequence of events, if anybody would agree, there are different sequence of events. Kind of open to suggestions, otherwise we'd start with the inclusionary housing.
So the only thing I would add, just in case it's not entirely clear to everybody, it is completely reasonable to deal with these as as for separate items with four different motions. If you so choose, you could you can improve the whole thing if you wanted to, or it just, if there's gonna be some modifications, it's obviously gonna be easier to deal with it one at a time. So that is completely reasonable to do it that way.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I actually, I think the inclusion, I think the the part of this that I think is gonna have the most discussion
Yeah.
is probably gonna be the inclusionary zoning. Probably followed by accessory dwelling units in terms of most discussion. I think inclusionary zoning might be best saved for last because I don't, I think we can, I think we're more likely to be able to action these first three tonight than we are to be able to action inclusionary zoning tonight, in my opinion. That's now, that's just my thought, but I I think the inclusionary zoning might might be better figured out.
So does it really matter to you? Which are the first three?
So 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 in terms of, when I say first three, I mean just on the page here. You have ADUs, you have RA, you have workforce housing overlay. Uh, I think all of which will are gonna require discussion, but I I think inclusionary zoning is going to require perhaps more discussion than we even have time for tonight, and I wouldn't wanna hold up the other three until this one is is done. That's kinda how I see it.
Anyone else wanna offer some thoughts on this? It's really just the question is the sequence.
It's just a sequence, I don't know if it really makes a difference, I think that's a good point, so we're able to table.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we try to maybe, oh, I don't know.
Alright, so.
We're already stuck on the first thing, there's not a good song.
There's not a, so this is what I would suggest. I I I got accessory dwelling unit up, let's start there because I, you know, in in my opinion, it is is it's fairly black and white. Either you change the review process or you don't. So remember, you know, kind of how we got here, it was a request, you know, essentially to to change the way review, change the review process. Attached require a site plan and your review, no public hearing. Detached requires a special exception and a site plan, a public hearing, your review and approval. The draft changes would make both of those, would remove that process in favor of a zoning approval at staff level if the application met the requirements of the ADU section. The the only other thing that has changed is we 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 are recommending a change to the, a simple change in language to use gross building area instead of gross floor area because we define gross building area in our zoning regulations. And if we can, when we're ready, we can kind of walk through that as well, as to why we recommend that and show you the definition. And if you're, if you like the definition, that's what we'll use, and if you've got questions about the definition, then we can tweak it.
Can we do that first? Does anybody have a problem with us just jumping into that? I just wanna have all the information.
Yeah, so. Sure.
Yeah, the discussion.
So we should, so again, this 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 slide is from your December sixteenth meeting and so it's not new. The current language is gross gross floor area, as we have said in our, in in the numerous memos to you, there is no definition in your zoning regulations for gross floor. There is one for gross building area. And it says, the gross building area is the sum of the gross horizontal areas of the several floors of all buildings enclosed by walls, excluding parking deck basement areas used for storage, loading and unloading, or for housing of mechanicals. We read that to mean it's it's the square footage of the house, including the finished basement and enclosed screened areas. Um, so that's that's the definition of, that's what we, that's what that definition would would use to to do the math.
I think that's pretty consistent of what we think about when we think about like with with ADUs, we have regulations on how large they can be in comparison to the original property. I, when I think about how large, I think about the the gross building area, not just the footprint, like it 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 couldn't be a very thin small tower right next to a regular house. I I think that makes a lot more sense, it's more in line with our actual vision than the existing language, that's makes sense to me.
I would agree, except I, you know, it's funny, cuz I was kinda like, well, what if the finished basement is really, you know, just finished in name only, but really not like a livable space. But I'm really kinda questioning the screened porch, cuz to me, that's like a a seasonal thing, you know, unless it's actually heated. I I would prefer it to be like a heated structure, you know, a structure that has mechanicals.
To be used as a a full-time living space.
Yeah, yeah, you know, like a screened porch.
I I do, and I I tend to agree, I feel like, even though, well, so, alright, I see two pieces of this. There are like real definitions in the real estate development world for these things and making up our own definition of what we think it should be seems like not a good idea. This is a real definition, I, no, I get that, that's what I'm saying.
So this is not made up, this is existing in your document.
Yeah, so actually, that's the point I'm making, is that this exists and it is a real thing. But on the other hand, to me, is like the basement, whether or not you had a finished basement, doesn't change the scale of the addition to your house. So I'm hesitant to want that to be included in the square footage. And then it's like, oh, I can't, I'm trying to apply for this ADU cuz like I need my parent to live there, but my house doesn't have a finished basement. But my neighbor who has a, my neighbor who has a ranch can build theirs cuz they have a finished basement in their ranch. And I don't have a finished basement in my ranch, so now I can't build the same kind of str- I don't know, like it doesn't, to me, it doesn't track like logically um, in terms of what we're trying to accomplish, but I also understand it if it's a existing definition that is used not just in Simsbury, but like out in the world in the industry, then.
Yeah, yeah.
So so again, it is an existing definition, but that doesn't mean that you couldn't tweak it, say, you know, we we're comfortable with the definition, but we're not comfortable including a finished basement or a screened porch and and you can, you can.
Yeah, that's where I was kinda like.
You could suggest that those are exempted from the calculus.
Yep, that's where I would fall.
So are you saying exclude finished basement and include and enclosed screen?
But I don't.
Yeah.
So I, my only issue with that, I mean, like, so then, so you you talk about like, oh, my, I I can't build as large an ADU as my neighbor because they have a finished basement in my, and I don't, so mine doesn't count, but there's the, like, that that area doesn't count. I I think I I can understand, like, that doesn't seem to make sense, I would only just say you have to draw a line, like, there has to be a line somewhere. So at some point on that line, something's gonna be a little wonky. Like, so sure, yeah, they have a finished basement, I don't have a finished basement, but I also have like a chimney and they don't, so, and that that's included. So it like, is it now, now mine's a little bigger cuz I have a chimney, like, I think if you, you start looking at every individual thing that a house could have on it and start trying to define it, it might get a li- I I think that becomes kinda over legislate.
If you look at like a house, yeah, I feel like if you look at a house and you're saying, we wanna be able to put an addition, but you don't wanna be able to, you don't want someone doubling their house as the as the ADU, then whether or not the basement is finished or not finished, isn't relevant to like how that addition, it's not relevant for either person.
So so could we just make it includes the basement and doesn't matter if it's finished or not?
Doesn't include the basement because the basement is like making it significantly bigger.
Well, I think there's a distinction between finished and unfinished.
Yeah, yeah.
The tax assessor makes, you know, they'll they'll make the observation for whether it's finished or not. But it does, let let me to wonder what, is there an implication of finished, what does finished mean? But it's better than, I think, I like the idea of taking a definition that's already in our regulations and use that one. We're entitled to have definitions that aren't universally applied in the rest of the world. We can have problems. There's reasons not to do that, but we have a lot of attitude. I'm in favor of just, you know, accepting the substitution of the of the uh, terms, so we're looking at gross floor area, no, gross building area.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
Does that include finished basement or not?
Uh, includes finished basement.
And screened porches. Yeah, I, yeah, again, you know, I feel like it's, you know, you make a good point, if we're talking.
We were just saying like.
It's right up there.
If we're talking two equal ranches, one that has a finished basement, one that doesn't, one ranch is gonna, I mean, a ranch, you know, obviously, the finished basement is going to be the same square footage as the house.
Yeah, essentially.
So now you're basically doubling the size of the ADU on that house.
Well.
Yeah.
Or a screened porch.
Or a screened porch, yeah.
Uh, how high is the, I mean, if it's if it's gross area, right, like, basements can only be so deep, right, like, they're not tunneling down into the ground, they they hit the.
No, but we're not doing cubing it, we're just doing.
Talking width and length.
Yeah, width and length, we're not talking height.
I mean, I get, I'm not following your logic as to why, I mean, I I thought you had said, one of you had said that difference was it was whether or not it was livable. But if you have a finished basement, by definition, it's livable, so why do, why would you exclude that?
I don't know, I I picture like the 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 finished basement in my mother-in-law's house, you know, like, it was finished a long time ago, like, isn't really finished, I mean, you know. I again, like, again, we're starting to get into.
It's it means habitable typically, right, I mean, it's habitable and they, and the the assessor makes some determination, you know, we use the assessor's card.
Yeah. I get, I I personally would like to leave the basement. That's me.
Yeah, I agree.
It's basement and porch out in the line.
I mean, there's a lot of houses that have a finished basement and it has walls, but then it doesn't have proper egress, so it's not technically fin- like, I mean, I'm just saying, like, you're, it's opening up like a I just feel like, and I feel like it's working against the entire point of it, which is that you're trying to balance it with the scale of the house.
Yes, agreed.
The basement doesn't really attribute to the scale.
Right.
I mean, that that seems fine. Uh, I like.
What's wrong?
And screened porch is definitely done.
And you, are you okay excluding screened porches?
Yeah, screened porch.
Alright, I'm I'm I am okay excluding screened porches and and finished basements.
Oh, so now you're okay excluding finished basements.
I'm okay, I'm okay with it because I'm, I do not have such strong opinions on finished basements that I feel as though that that that's worth.
I mean, we don't wanna fight on the first one, right?
I know, but if you paid for one, and you're paying the taxes and I, you feel like it ought to be working.
Well, I'm I'm in, I'm in agreement with the porch situation cuz I feel like that is just not a year-round hap- hap- whatever, we can't live in it year-round.
Yeah, it's in a.
So however, I don't, I, with the basement, I don't think we should be getting into the business of determining what like, what is finished, is it like the the furniture is up to date, or the carpet is out of date, or the walls are out of date? That's really not our rule.
So I think the tax assessor would just, we would just go with whatever the buildings assess that.
So I I could go either way on the basement.
Yeah, so I I I understand your logic, right, it's like, the whole, the whole point of the ADU regulation is that the ADU is not of a disproportionate size to the house. And so if you have the big finished basement, if one is gonna be a lot larger than the other, kind of at an arbitrary line. I I I understand that, I I don't think that's, I'm not like pushing for a couple extra feet here just cuz you have a finished basement, it doesn't seem.
Yeah.
That's kinda where I'm at, I'm not trying to limit people, I just feel like it's not allowing people to apply
Yeah.
kind of evenly across the board.
And you know, as to your point, like, if they have the finished basement, well, shouldn't it count, well, let me, they have a nice finished basement now, that's good for them.
It counts, it doesn't count toward an ADU, but it accounts toward their property value and their enjoyment of their
It doesn't have, yeah.
Having good, yeah, lots of other things.
existing property and everything else.
Yeah.
I think to that end, that's kinda where I get stuck too, because and and my feeling about ADUs in general is, it's my property, I should be able to build what I want on my property.
Sure.
That's where I land.
Within the, yeah.
Of course, within the parameters of zoning regulations.
Right.
It looks like there'd be four would be in favor of excluding the finished basement and the screened porch.
Yeah, that's.
At least four.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, you could knock it right out by making a motion to accept the gross building area definition, but exclude finished basements and enclosed screened porches as part of the calculus.
I think that simplifies things.
Did somebody make the motion?
I I don't have a specific motion for that, what you gotta do?
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion.
Wait, are we voting for accepting?
Just the, just the language, just the language. Just the language, just the language. Um, so I mo- uh, uh, let's see, I move that the zoning commission approves adjusting uh, the current language of how to measure an ADU. Um, instead of using gross floor area, we will uh, accept the proposed gross building area as a definition. Um, where that definition is the sum of the gross horizontal areas of several floors of all buildings enclosed by walls on the property, excluding parking decks and basement areas used for storage, loading and unloading, or for housing of mechanicals or central heating and air conditioning equipment, period.
And?
And not including a finished basement and or enclosed screened porch.
That language helps cuz we'll put that in so it's clear to the public.
That we have specifically, yeah.
That we are not doing that.
Well, it's, it may be, if it just said no basement. There's no basement considered in this.
Not including a basement and or screened porch.
Yeah.
That's what you want, there's four people sitting here wanting to say that.
How's that? Yeah, yeah. Got it.
Alright, yeah.
So that was my motion.
I'm not in agreement, but, you know, I get it.
You guys second the motion?
I'll second it.
No, Tony does.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying to the one someone.
Well, I thought you were asking for a second.
Me too, go tell me.
Tony, okay.
Uh, we're on point to this.
Yeah, so the motion is to approve the substitution of the term gross building area.
Yes.
But deleting all reference to basement spaces.
Or even excluding basement or enclosed screened porches.
Yeah. Yes.
Oh.
Is that understood by everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other comments or issues otherwise to take a vote here? All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. I'm a nay. So that's it's gonna be five to one. Alright.
Let's move to the next question.
Alright, now back to the main question.
Okay, question number one.
Oh, wow.
So that's really a statement that comes from P O C D. I'm not sure that we need to vote on this, but uh, is there a debate on the accessory dwelling revision?
Yeah.
And the first bullet removal of process periods as being a primary objective.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm I'm in favor of the the ADU, uh, the accessory dwelling review process changes that we've we've come up with. I think the uh, it reduces some significant challenges um, members might, uh, people might face when trying to build ADUs. It allows for increasing the, not only uh, housing opportunity, but the significantly increasing affordable housing opportunity. This provides excellent options for um, seniors who want to downsize, for people with uh, children with special needs or family members with special needs. Um, it allows younger people to potentially live in town, even when they would not necessarily have the income to do so. And it 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 helps to prevent what can turn into um, arbitrar- arbitrary speculation on the types of people that might be moving in. If the public hearing has occurred, we've heard the testimony, I think that ADUs do not meet the threshold of a zone change or something else that we needed. Uh, a a public hearing for every li- si- single one that happens. I think that as written, as with the change to the way we estimate the gross area, I I think this should pass as written.
Thank you, anybody else have some thoughts?
I agree with that.
I know, I'm struggling with this one a little bit, um. I mean, I do think that the idea of removing the process barrier is a noble cause. I'm not convinced that we're having a major process issue, like, I don't know that there's been complaints to the process, and I understand, like, not making people.
You haven't been in one of these meetings.
I mean, we've we've approved two so far.
Yeah, referring to those that are contested by the neighbors.
Yeah, I think that I I hear that and I do have concerns about that, um, but I also feel like the I do feel like it could be a slippery slope where we don't even know that any of that's happening and slowly it, I don't know, I must not, I'm torn on this one, I'm struggling with this one a little bit, because I don't wanna cause a problem for people who are trying to um, come before their, and having to be, you know, told by their neighbors or being applied unfairly. And I think Josh made the point that, you know, we are approving them when they meet these requirements anyway, because that's our job to do so. So, you know, that part is like, okay, just let whoever the town approve it, but on the other hand, I do feel like some level of um making sure that you care about what you're, like, that you're being a considerate neighbor in how you approach it does matter to, so I can see it both ways.
Yeah, yeah, I I'm I'm the same, you know, I'll admit, I was, this is the one that I was always like, yeah, I wasn't too keen on removing the um, the public hearing. And and I'm team ADU, like, I will likely be building one in the next ten years for my own mother, so I mean, I'm very much in favor of them, I have no issue with them. I do think, although, you know, it wasn't necessarily a huge population, we clearly saw that there are people in town who really wanna be informed. Um, I was at the contentious one and and it definitely put a bad taste in my mouth, I know what you're talking about, but at the same time, um I do feel like, you know, we we do wanna keep the community involvement, you know, and again, ideally in a in a positive manner that folks are aware of what's happening, but if somebody is building a structure in your neighborhood, in, you know, again, you're right, we're likely are gonna approve it if it's if it's um, you know, if it falls within our our regulations, but I I still think that there is merit in keeping the hearing for detached ADUs. So I would vote in favor of not changing this one.
Well, let me just sort of go back to the neighbors have no right no right of access to a process that has to do with someone who wants to build an addition on their house.
Yep.
You know.
Yeah.
Or wants to build a separate structure out there, that's gonna be a storage or garage or something. Or wants to paint their house uh, shertruce or something, and you don't.
You're right.
And you don't expect to. And so the point of does this, does that issue of putting up an a detached ADU, is it so different than an attached ADU that's within the footprint? I don't think it rises to the level that it should command a public hearing or the or the direct uh, involvement of the commission. I think the thing is so thoroughly circumscribed by our regulations and the state requires us, well, it it's so completely circumscribed by our regulations and I I don't have any problem with, you know, um not, but having that delegated, as as we seem to be comfortable delegating the approval process for attached. But to the professional standard.
I don't, we don't currently have that delegated, right, people with attached ADUs still come before us, it's just not a public hearing. Right?
That's right.
So we don't have that delegated right now either.
Well, the the language of our of our draft, if I got that right, maybe it's, I've got a fade, is for it's staff to be, the the uh, review process to be delegated for both attached and detached at the professional stand. I think that's a great idea. Um, they're perfectly capable, the language and and regulations are so clearly written that um I don't think there's great risk to the public, uh, and the fact is, anybody who's not satisfied with the decision they get during review process can go to the zoning board of appeals, go to the Z B A with the decision. And, you know, I I don't know if we've had one of those, but who knows? And uh, you know, I I don't know if we've had one of those, but who knows? This has been going on a long time. So, from a personal standpoint, I think that we should revise the uh and that these are not, I mean, there's not a huge list of changes here. It's just uh this delegation of work and the um elimination of the um of the special uh of the requirement that, you know, causes it goes with the requirement that the public hearing is part of the process. And I don't think that should.
Can can I ask George a question?
Sure, uh well, I don't know.
Can I, can I ask you a question, George?
You can, you can, you can ask.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you if I can ask you a question. So, am I understanding this correctly that we are voting not only to remove the required public hearing for detached, but we are also removing the site plan approval for the attached?
Yes.
So, they wouldn't be coming to us for any of these.
Correct.
Right.
Hmm.
But it's treating them both the same.
I miss that.
It's it's.
Fair.
And I think
Get it.
I think it's important to note that the there's a certain amount of opportunity cost that comes when we are making decisions that will always boil down to, well, does sta- does staff say it's okay? And if the answer is yes, we are going to say yes, right, especially when it especially with the non-public hearing, right?
Yep.
Now, the cost to that, even if, even if the process almost always leads to a yes, because if if it's allowed, why would we bar it? It's that we spend time, we have very limited time in this room. We spend time executing uh e- executing the work that could be done by staff when we're not and we're not spending that time legislating, creating policy, which is ultimately what we're elected for. We're not elected because we're all experts in every single piece of every single uh property that comes before us. We're here because we're here to set the direction of what the town, what uh the direction of town is gonna go. And the time spent not legislating and spent on um execute administering is time, I think, not well spent by the commission.
But this isn't a huge amount of time because there aren't a huge amount of these coming.
There there are days where that's all that's on the agenda.
Right, and that's the time when we could approve it quickly and move on to another topic. What's that?
There could be more activity if we make these changes. And in addition, there's something happening across America trying to find answers to the housing issue.
Yeah.
And so, uh accessory dwelling units are gonna become, continue to become more prevalent and uh, you know.
Would that then argue in favor of us having a little bit more over oversight? If we're gonna be getting more and more, you know, I'm just saying that could go either way, you know?
Shannon's question.
Oh.
Uh, no, I I just have a comment. Um, first point, I just wanna reiterate is that A D U's are in line with the P O C D. And I think that that's a really important piece that we need to keep in mind, a factual point. Second to that, and I've mentioned this the last two meetings, some of the language that I heard in public testimony from people about the potential of A D U's was very disturbing to me. And um, and I I I spoke about that. I think we need to stick to the regulations that we have as a defining factor. I would hate to see a neighbor influence have a negative influence on a family needing to build an A D U, wanting to build an A D U because they were accused of social engineering, for example. So, I think we need to remove that emotional piece of it and stick to the regulations. And I do trust town staff to be able to do that.
Mr. Chair, I'm in favor of the language as drafted. Um, I don't think anything we do tonight is gonna be written in stone. We'll have the opportunity to re- to revisit this at a later date. We'll have an ongoing obligation of oversight of the town planner. And I think it's, we should keep an eye on this and see how it's uh working. And if there are any issues that are identified, we can revisit uh the process at a later date. The time being based on the comments from my fellow commissioners, I support this.
I feel like as a board and as with Bruce as our chair, we can control some of that dialogue that you're worried about, Shannon, and I I feel like we can set expectations um for for what, and Bruce, you've been doing that um at our meetings in general to the public um audience, um that we can set expectations for proper and appropriate behavior. But I think that it's sort of like a two, a two-way street, like we don't want to create an um and and opportunity where people feel like their neighbors are coming out against them and like they can't do something on their own property. But at the same time, I feel like that idea that the neighbor who's putting something on is being considerate um as a property owner of the neighborhood that they live in, because we are all in this together, is also important. And I don't know that they're entirely, I don't know that I could say that they're equally or unequally important. So, for me, I just feel like um kind of having that moment where everybody's trying to be considerate of each other by having to come forward might be the right way to go for right now until we see. But again, I wasn't at that meeting that you're referring to where maybe something, like we've only had, I think, really positive experiences with people coming before us so far. Um, for my personal.
Just a point of clarification, I'm I'm not concerned with what they're saying to me or to us. I'm concerned with their, the mindset behind that and that being a pervasive mindset that is unfair. I can't change their words, I'm not interested in changing their words. But behind those words is a mindset that I don't want to enter into this process.
No, can't change a mindset.
I don't know that having it done one way or another changes the mindset. It takes it away from us seeing it and dealing with it, but it doesn't change them from being a bad neighbor to their neighbor. Um, and when the thing goes up, they're gonna be as bad as they're going to be.
That's what I'm saying, we need to.
But I feel like if we set the tone for the proper discourse to happen and we oversee that discourse, I think there's a better chance of everybody kind of coming out feeling heard and less backlash privately. If that makes any sense.
Uh, it it makes sense, I just don't think we agree.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't know that it mo- most of the time, most of the time, these 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 requests go through without issue, usually there's not even public comment even when it's available.
Yeah.
Um, but to, someone having to subject themselves to the possibility of the kind of vitriol you can see at these kind of meetings, I just, I don't, especially since all of all that vitriol, i- i- all it's attempting to do is try to force us into making an arbitrary decision that's not based on the law. Because if it was based on the law, it would be approved if it followed all the rules. So, I don't see it, I don't think it's necessary to have that process if our decision-making is ultimately going to come down to, is this within the regulations? And if it is within the regulations and we somehow found ourselves saying no, we would have made an arbitrary decision and the process has failed. And I think this eliminates that possibility.
All set, thank you. Hang those eyes.
Um, yeah, I'm let me just ask.
I I think we're outnumbered, so.
Yeah, I think I think we all kinda know what we want and, you know, but I think.
We had enough.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm sorry, Bruce, do what you want.
No, I I'm, I think that, you know, unless somebody feels like there's some 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 magic formula, there's something somebody could say that would change their thinking. Um, yeah, I think there's a, it's probably time to handle this question.
Can we set up a a timeframe to revisit this? So, like we're talking about, it's not, you know, necessarily permanent. Can we um do a check-in, how many, like in six months or a year, how many have been approved? So that we keep a kind of a focus on it, so we can, not a focus, that's not the right word, but so that we keep a pulse on what's happening there? Can we set that up? I don't know if there's a way to, if we just have to remember, like, I'll put it in my phone.
Yeah, interesting. I think we just ask the town planner to include that in his periodic updates.
We could, we could certainly update each and every one.
I'm not sure, do we need it every time or just collectively, like every so often?
Yes, of course.
We hear about it, because it may be not very many, I don't know, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Okay.
We could make that part of our direct report.
I gotta, I gotta, I got the motion, okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that the zoning commission approves the text amendment to the zoning regulations to amend section three point five accessory accessory dwelling. To revise the review and approval process for attached and detached accessory dwelling units to allow for staff administrative approval for both detached and attached A D U's. The adopted language is contained in the December second twenty twenty four staff on random and is effective immediately pending the statutory appeal period. In a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion in a second, is is there any more discussion, comments? And then we go ahead with a vote, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
So, that's four ayes, and those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Two nays, so it's a four to two vote emotional theories to uh adopt the proposed changes to the A D U regulation. So.
Thank you. Okay, what do you want to do next? Uh, let's do the workforce housing overlay flex zone since there there weren't a lot of questions about it, there weren't a lot, there wasn't a lot of public comment about it. But, um, let's just, I would just bite that one off, go ahead.
Okay. Well, there's only, there's only two substantial changes here to the workforce housing zone. One is to change the name of the uh regulation uh from revisions, uh from workforce housing to uh housing opportunity zone. Housing.
Housing strategies floating zone, so the script, the um, I've got a little item up on the screen that might be helpful.
Oh, good.
Again, used at your December sixteenth meeting. Um.
So, the rename is.
So, so there's a rename, there's a removal of the design section staff is reporting that we have design guidelines. Um, the 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 removal of the seven hundred fifty foot feet to Hot Meadow is is the only, is the other significant. Um, and then it removes the affordability of the affordability requirement with the assumption that they would you would be a- adopting some form of inclusionary requirement generally and across the board.
If I may, ask a question, sorry. If we were not to determine to do a affordability require, because I agree, yeah, I'm fine with removing, you know, it, we should be consistent across the board. But what if we don't come up with a townwide requirement?
Then this would be a a a very flexible, mixed residential floating zone without an affordability requirement.
But then we could conceivably, when somebody comes to us, say, we want you to do that, you know, but on a case-by-case basis, or we'd have nothing to stand on.
It it certainly makes it, it makes it more difficult from from a consistency st- standpoint, it does.
Well, maybe we could uh wordsmith fairly quickly, some phrasing to go in there that says if there is a uh if if there's a townwide uh regulation adopted at some point that has that percentage, then whatever that percentage is the percentage to be observed here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
You don't even need to, you don't even technically need to do that because the inclusionary one, when and if ever adopted, will say applies to all property, all all projects in town.
So, the the only issue with that being that there is no inclusion, so if we were to pass this today and not pass a townwide, there is a period of time where there is no inclusionary requirement in that ear, in that zone whatsoever.
That's right.
There'd be none.
No inclusionary requirement in any zone.
So, the the only thought I, the only thought I have.
There isn't now.
Right, right, right. So, the only thought I have on this, thi- this uh, this is the Hartford properties under this, correct?
It is not, it is, it is, it is not.
No.
Oh. Oh, this is the the, um, excuse me, this is the floating zone.
This is the floating zone.
Then, then never mind, then I do not have a thought.
And we haven't gotten a lot of interest in this.
No, we had one.
Because it's so restrictive, right?
We we, we have one and
It's not.
we 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 have had one, Cambridge Crossing was was used, this, we haven't had. Um, to my surprise, as I said, this is, this is the most flexible zone. I I I think we reported previously, and this is not new information. I think we we've reported previously that it 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 could very well be that the twenty percent affordability requirement is is is
Detrimental to.
it is difficult, it's a difficult burden to overcome.
Yeah. And the seven fifty from Hop Meadow eliminates other potential properties that could be, it could be used.
Does.
We'd be arbitrary, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, it should go as, if you had, if you can answer or not, should be pretty much that. Idea. Yeah, I mean, I I think that because the twenty percent affordability requirement essentially makes this worthless, it it's impossible to do. Um, except for one not particularly successful um development, I I I I'm okay with getting rid of this until we can replace it with the townwide. The the uh twenty percent affordability requirement, which would have been my only hang-up, the rest of it, I think, is is just good public policy.
Now, if we don't get a townwide one resolved, are we all okay with whatever duration goes along? Um, I'm not anticipating us resolving the townwide one tonight.
I mean.
I I agree with you. Um, now, I think, I think a lot of these are very flexible, it would, it that be, there would be more housing built of different, it would be mixed use of different types. I think it, that it con- contributes a lot of the goals, the stated goals of the um of the plan.
And we still have to approve what it is, right? Like, we still have to agree to allow the, someone presents us a plan and we have to agree to allow it?
It's technically a two-step process, it's a, it's a zone change
That's how it works, right?
Zone.
Yeah. Right.
And a special exception site plan, often you'd see them at the same time, but but not always.
Right, so.
So, it's two steps.
The idea is we would select it based, I'm sorry, interrupt you.
No.
Um, the idea is we would select it based on how well, like what, if we think what the developer is presenting to us fits with the area
Yes.
and everything else, it's completely, it's fairly arbitrary.
Hmm, well, it is control, I mean, the the thing that I take comfort in is the fact that it must have public water and sewer.
Yeah.
So, you know, that does limit them as far as where exactly they can be. Um, but, yeah, I mean, I think anything that would fit that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I I was, I the one thing I would say next is
Arbitrary sounds wrong.
it's not arbitrary, but it it there, there it, there is, there's likely a higher bar
Yeah.
during the review process because of the, you have the multiple applications required.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm great, there's nothing as of right in this?
It's no, no, absolutely not.
No, as of, so I mean.
Full overlay requires rezoning, special exception and site plan.
Yeah, so that's, that's a ton of oversight.
Yeah, okay.
I I'm definitely okay removing the twenty percent affordability requirement until we can put, replace it with something. Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Chair, you might have a unanimous.
Well, no, it's not. I guess my thought is that we just pulled the batting order out of the air. It it wasn't written in stone anymore, this has to be number two on the, we could make this number four.
We could.
Right.
And by that time, we'll know if there's a number we can put in there. Yeah, I thought the concern expressed was that we were gonna be able to reach agreement on the inclusionary zoning amendment, so then we'd be left having to deal with two of these changes at a later meeting.
Yeah, I can, so remember how the draft for the inclusionary section, it's simply, it it would, it would, it it, it's um it's kind of silent on what zoning district is, it just says any project of ten or, uh, right now, it says any project of ten or more would require a percentage. So, it it would apply to a- any, so, I I mean, I would, I I think you could, you can ignore the twenty percent a- and, and it, when you're prepared, approve it as drafted. And then when you get to the inclusionary, you'll deal with that and then that will apply across the board.
I see.
Yeah.
So, we don't have to remove it as well.
I don't think you need to bring your hands about, well, I I do think you have to remove it, I mean, I I I do because it's, it's just again, it's
Oh, do you?
As drafted, it's, so as drafted, it's not, there's no inclusionary requirement because we shifted it to
Yeah.
townwide, essentially.
Would we consider approving this with the twenty percent affordable with the understanding that if there's a townwide requirement that supersedes any requirement that we have in this, in this, in this one?
I mean, that.
Yeah, I I guess my only issue with that, I my only issue with that is that the t- the twenty percent makes this worthless.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, you're right, you're right.
Because it's simply impossible, so it 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 runs into many of the same problems we're gonna find with the inclusionary zoning.
Yeah, 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 my, my.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I'm not sure there's s- strong sentiment in favor of approving what's there
Yeah.
me after removal of the twenty percent affordable. You don't think there's strong sentiment in favor of that? No, I said, I think there is.
Oh.
Okay.
What is the last line in red?
Yeah, so that that it's in, it's in red. The uh, we had suggested a consideration of, you could, the the workforce ha- this, this zone, the housing strategies floating zone is the only zone where you could consider any incentives. You can't do that anywhere else, it's not permitted. Um, but I I went back in and looked, in the zone already as drafted allows for parking reductions. Um, but I, I went back in and looked, and the zone already as drafted allows for parking reductions. Un, un, under the current code and unchanged as drafted. Um, and so that leaves you with a, a, a density bonus, right, that's the, the only other thing that, that we heard for, as part of public testimony. That could help, and then I went in and looked at, if you look at the specific uh. Zones and densities, the, the, they're already fairly high, and so. I kind of, you know, backpedaled on whether that's a good idea or not, I, I guess the, it, it would be. I think you can go forward as drafted without consideration of the incentives, because I'm not sure how it helps. I think we were, we were talking about incentives, if you were gonna have that higher inclusionary number.
Mm.
You know, in the fifteen to twenty percent.
Yeah.
Right.
But, you know, as it gets lower, it's less, so just for example, in this district, if you did a multifamily, it's, the density is at twenty units per acre. Multifamily, it allows um ten units per acre for townhouses, those are, those are decent densities.
So. If we remove the line that has the twenty percent on it, plus the red on the bottom. That. Seems to still have support. Am I mistaken about anybody's?
Well, a- as avail, as available incentives to offer, I don't think it really matters until there's a affordability requirement, correct?
I think so, and I think you, you might be better off with letting an applicant come in and tell you what the incentives are, and then we can deal with it that way.
Yeah.
And we're not removing the line about removing the twenty percent, we are removing the twenty percent, so that line stays. And we replace it with a townwide requirement, it just may not happen tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
So. So that line stays as it's presented.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, your current draft does not include a twenty percent requirement, the draft language that you have been reviewing, it doesn't include that. That means that we have removed it. It is removed.
But not on the screen, in the motion, it's, it's not in the motion.
No, on the screen, it's saying it's removed.
No, on the screen, we're saying we're removing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember, this slide was meant for the public, we were telling the public what the changes were, and the changes are the ones in yellow, so today, today, there is a twenty percent requirement, but we are removing that requirement. Right?
Okay. And the language of the other text amendment section is going to encompass this. Without further adjustment on this.
I believe it does, yes.
Got it, all right. Um, any more comments, thoughts, concerns? Um, somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, I move that the zoning commission approves a text amendment to the zoning regulations workforce housing overlay zone to amend and rename section eight point three. To the housing strategies floating zone to create additional housing opportunities with flexible design standards. The adopted language is contained in December second, two thousand twenty twenty four staff memorandum and is effective immediately pending the statutory appeal period.
Second.
Okay, Shannon has the second, uh, any further comments, discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Uh, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. On the eight o'clock.
So, you're left with two choices. R eight, should have brought a little spinning wheel. Uh, could you do the R eight, or you could jump into the inclusionary zone?
Can I make a comment on that? So, I, I am in favor of doing the R eight now, and I'd just like to. Pose that we move, that we have another discussion. About, um, what is remaining, uh, inclusionary, yes. Um, I think that's a lengthy discussion.
Oh, you mean like an, another meeting?
Yes. I, 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 well, I'd love to hear where people are at with it.
I would start it, you should, you might wanna consider starting it to see.
Okay, see where we are, see where we are. It's just so I can ponder.
You should be reminded of kind of where we are and what the options are.
Yeah.
Other options.
That went really well for me. It was a great idea, John, it was a great idea, sorry.
What are you gonna miss?
What are you gonna miss? Okay, fine.
No, I think it's great that you tried.
Uh, could, could we still do R eight first?
Okay, fine.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, where am I, R eight slot?
I still wanna do R eight first.
Yeah, I think we should do R eight first, Shannon, and I just feel like I kinda wanna hear.
No, you're right.
Where people are so we can think about it, you know?
No, that's the, that's right, just, there are moments in time where I wish I could just like wrap my spare time. And that was one of those times, I'm just gonna reel those back in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna finish that discussion tonight, I don't think we can. Yeah, no, we could all agree to it. Right, well, I mean, it's like, I wanna hear like how far, like what far apart we are.
Okay, so let's go.
So, while, while you wait, I, I had something I wanted to say on the R, R eight zone, if that's.
Sure.
Okay.
Through you, Mister Jared. All right, so I, the R eight zone, I think is really, I, I think it's a really good model for how we can be doing things as a zoning commission, right? So in, in keeping the theme of, if we can avoid making these very tiki tack, extremely important. But e- uh essentially staff decisions on, on properties, on every little thing, and spend our time legislating. And looking at the land use of the town and how we should be developing, I think this is an excellent way to. Uh, allow us to have those more substantive discussions while also utilizing our very capable staff for some of those specifics. So an R eight zone would allow uh two families as of right, correct? Right, I'm, I'm correct on this, much smaller lots, so in continuing with the theme of more housing diversity, housing options. It does not remove the public hearing process for these changes. But it puts the public hearing process, I think where it's more valuable, on a land use discussion instead of the specifics of, of this. Of a, of a duplex, so when, when someone wants to rezone to R eight, we're going to be able to look at where it is. We can take into consideration, um, what's around it, the sewage, the um. Sewage, anything else that we think is gonna be relevant for what that land use might be, but once it's approved. You now have the ability to make that two-family home, um, and you don't start getting in. To the territory of trying to affect the demographics of town by uh enforcing zoning laws. Um, which sometimes can seem to be what people are trying to do at some of our public hearings. So, I think this is an excellent piece of legislation, I hope it passes as well, that's my say.
So, Tucker, if I may.
Yeah. Yeah.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Most of them, I, I do, no, I do, I have no issue with, with the concept of an R eight, I would like to have a little bit more control over where we can, we, they can be put in. I, I would like to, I don't wanna leave it completely open, because I do worry a little bit with this one with unintended consequences, where suddenly. You know, somebody has a big, big piece of property and they, you know, out, out in the middle of. You know, the woods, and suddenly we're sticking, you know, a bunch of little houses in there, which don't really fit, err, in keeping with the area, um.
But we have, we have all the oversight, they have to, they have to have a.
Right, agreed, but I just think maybe we can give people like, you know, let's not leave it completely wide open, let's.
It's not that wide open.
Yeah, I think they still have to come to the zoning commission.
First of all, you have to have public water and sewer.
Yeah.
Okay, do we need public water and sewer with this one?
We have dear word. Yes.
The, do we require?
Well, I don't know that it says it, but you, you, I, I, you, you can't build an R eight, eight thousand square foot lot without water and sewer, you can't have a septic tank on it.
It's your practice.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's too small, I mean, you could add that language if, if that, if that made you more comfortable, for sure.
I thought that was in there.
Yeah, uh, you know, let me pull that aside.
No, it was not in this one, this one is pretty open, that's why.
It's not that open.
It, yeah, look, I mean, if, if it makes you feel better, I, I, it's like a compromise. I would have been happy if you just take all the R fifteen we have and just turn it into all into R eight, so this is a, this is not that. So this, this is a line, you feel like you wanted to get somewhere in negotiations, that's, this is a really good middle point.
I, I'm sorry, I missed the first half of that, Tucker, sorry.
Just that, just that there's, we could have, we could have turned all the R fifteen into, into R eight, just as a stroke of the pen. This still keeps the, uh, you know.
Where did that come from, we weren't gonna do that.
Why, who knows? But all I'm saying is that, yeah, it would have been public hearing, but all I'm saying is that this allows you to individually. At any one of those given points, we have every, all the decision-making power.
Yeah, I hear you, I hear you, I just, this is the one that I feel like suddenly something's gonna happen, and we're gonna go, oh, didn't see that coming. I, I just, it worries me a little bit, I just would like to be able to maybe put a little bit more structure around it, that's all.
And Bryce, could you expand on that?
Yeah, what kind of structure made me expand, um, oh, well, again, I think, I think, you know, perhaps looking on the map and, and seeing what areas we think are most suited for this. I think, uh, again, you know, actually doc, documenting, um, sewer and water, um. You know, maybe saying a certain amount of distance from forty-four or, or Hop Meadow, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm throwing out some ideas. But, um, I would like to explore just, again, I have no issue with it in theory, I, I think it's fine, I just would prefer to have a little bit more control over. You know, I, I know we have control because they're gonna have to come to us, I get that, but I mean. I would prefer to have a leg to stand on when somebody comes to us and says, but I think it's perfect here in the middle of the woods, and I can.
Or in the middle of somebody's neighborhood where I would say, no, if I, like, if someone came to me and was like, we're gonna take this one lot. In the middle of the neighborhood and convert it into six homes, I would be like, mm, not really sure that that fits in a three-quarter acre neighborhood. That would be me saying that, but that doesn't mean that, there's no guarantee that somebody, that the whole board would, would.
But there's no.
Think that that was a logical thing, and I feel like, so I feel like that's, I think that's what mo, people are most afraid of, and I can understand that.
Right, well, it'd be.
That's pretty significant.
It's, but I mean, that's, that's, that's why we have elections, right, I mean, so like, i- 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 if you are concerned about it, you have a board. That you feel is not going to allow for R eight zones to be, it, it, it becomes a political decision of where are our, our eight zones gonna be allowed? And that is up to our decision-making process and, and up to the personalities in here, so yeah, you can, you can try to block off areas that say, they absolutely are not allowed here. But I, I don't know that we need to be that restrictive, um, not to mention that all the unint, unintended consequences that can come from. Mapping all these out and then missing a spot that would be, be a, a good place, then someone has to ask for a zone change anyway, and then I, I, I just, I think it's. You can't put R eight in certain places anyway, it has to be water and sewer, that's very restrictive already. Um, I, and I, and I think it allows us to have those legislative, those, those policy conversations.
Yeah, I'm fine with, um, making some of that criteria, water and sewer, I think my, my concern with saying, well. I, I, I think if we're gonna make a definition, we need to be very clear on what that definition is, and it cannot be, my fear is that. We put, um, you know, R eight housing. All in one section way out of the way, that's not accessible to anything. That's not right either, so, but, that said, I come back to, we have, we have review and oversight of that, so. Yeah.
So let me ask, let me just, let me just o- offer, um, to, to, to remind you of, of, of what your responsibilities are when you review zoning. A, 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 a zone change application, it really comes to you straight out of state statute. It says, the zoning commission shall review, uh, policies of P O C D. Remember what our P O, our, our P O C D has maps and policies that do give direction to where we, we should direct density. So we know that in the western part of arc, of, of our town, the P O C D says that should be low-density residential. Um, central part is kind of moderate density, and then as you get on the eastern part, it's, it's more high density. And then it says, two, you should review the pattern of zoning in the area. Again, not for i- identical zones, but for consistency. And then I would throw a third in, which is, you know, this, this issue of the, you know, the single lot, you know, single family lot turned into six units. You, you also have to deal with the concept of spot zoning, so if, if there were, if a commission was inclined to approve. An R eight lot in the middle of our forty lots, you will lose that in court. That decision, if you were to so approve that application, and your staff would tell you that this is probably illegal spot zoning, we would not recommend you do this. So, I only say that to say that you, you, you do have guidance, perhaps it doesn't go far enough, that, that guidance. But that is the guidance of state statute that says it is your responsibility to review the policies and plan. This, what they call the, the comprehensive plan, the zoning scheme for consistency, um, or inconsistency, frankly. Um, and then obviously the, the regular legal concept of spot zoning, which really prevents you, ought to prevent you from making those kinds of bad decisions. In my opinion, they would be bad decisions.
But like almost anywhere where you're converting this, it's gonna be quasi-spot zoning, cause it doesn't exist now. And you're gonna approve it on a site, so you are, you are approving it as a use on a p- piece of property.
Wait, hopefully you will look at what the surrounding zoning is in the surrounding, um, pattern of development, perhaps there are.
Yeah.
Higher density lots adjacent to it, perhaps they're zoned in old, uh, maybe they're zoned P A D, or maybe they're zoned R D, or.
Yeah.
Or an existing apartment or something like that, so, so tho- th- those, again, those are, those are, I would say they're part of your duties, frankly, as part of that public hearing process.
Okay.
Right. Like, if, if, uh, if someone tr- put an R eight in Terrafill, I think it would be hard to argue that that's inconsistent with the. Design philosophy of, of Terrafill, I mean, there's tons of multifamily there already, tons of duplex.
Well, we had, one of our first speakers at the last hearing, got up and said, hey, he has a six thousand square foot lot in Terrafill, he loves it. And he thinks there should be more of them, and so, you know, I think that some people think this is a great thing, cause they recognize it. But the fact is, we picked it because it fills the notion of an infill strategy. We recognize that we don't have significant land available for development, it's been largely. Tracked with open space.
Yep.
And our forty zoning, and so, you know, um, it looks like. The only way we're gonna have change is slowly by infill rather than, you know, we're not gonna find. Another hundred and some odd acres of silverman just down there, um, they're just not out there, and so. That's why it's such a small zone, it's infill, it's not major development, so how much risk is there? I think it fits what we're trying to do, and I think there's plenty of, uh, control, and. I'm, I'm in favor of the way it's written, I think it's a great piece of work, I'm supportive of it, so, don't wonder what, what I'm thinking.
Yeah, would you consider the water and sewer at least having it documented?
I, I got it in my, my notes from this afternoon's review, so I, I found that somewhere.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm not making it up, yeah, and if I am making it up, it's a good suggestion, maybe we should clarify before we move on.
Okay.
So, but in fu- functionally, you cannot have a, a well and, and a septic tank on an R eight, it's, it's impossible through R.
Probably.
It's been my experience, but I, it's certainly if you're in, again, inclined to a- approve this draft, you, you, you could add a bullet point right on this page, um. Which is, you know, at, at the end, it's really the last page that has kind of some caveats associated with it, so that would be the location to do it, you could simply say. Must be, public water and sewer must be available.
I mean, if it, but it's, I, I, even if you could, but if you could make it work, that would be extremely rare, but I, I don't, also don't know that.
But we, we don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Fermont Valley Health District in the future, state regulators.
You don't make that call.
Yeah.
But we can stay R eight, needs public water and public source, and then we don't have to worry about other agencies changing our decision-making. But, you know, four years from now, there could be six other, six new faces here, who will change where we would.
No matter what we.
I know, so why not just say it?
Okay, I, I, so.
I mean.
If it's implied, we might as well write it.
So, uh, George, uh, if you got a motion, would you include, uh.
Yeah, I agree.
After and requirements in the sixth line at a, that says public water and sewer must be available?
Yes, I would just add that as a sentence.
Okay. That's fine with me.
Anybody else have other comments or suggestions? Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, sure, there you go, please.
Our way to move that the zoning commission approves a text amendment to the zoning regulations to amend section two. Zoning districts and section three residential districts, to add a new R eight residential zoning district with minimum eight thousand square foot lots. Four thousand square foot lots for. four thousand square foot lots for two-family homes, and corresponding development standards, setbacks and requirements, public water and sewer must be available. The adopted language is contained in the December second twenty twenty-four staff memorandum, and is effective immediately pending the statutory appeal period.
In a second.
All second.
Second, any further discussion, concerns, comments? Then we'll proceed with a vote, all in favor say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. Uh it's six to zero, so the motion carries on, so they approve the uh R eight zone. Now.
Okay, let me just remind you where we where we are on the inclusionary as drafted. Okay, so, at the the draft would re- introduces a new section, we don't have, the section doesn't exist, so it's a brand-new section of your zoning code. So the current draft would require for any project over uh ten units or more that fifteen percent of those homes be provided as affordable, half of them at sixty percent of area median income and half at eighty. There's no buyout, no uh fee in lieu of uh th- there would be a deed restriction requirement and a housing affordability plan that kind of lays out how they're monitored and how they're um, you know, how how they're ad- administered. Uh as part of really kind of your public comment, you did hear some concerns about the difficulty or the challenge to the, particularly the development community of providing uh providing a- affordable units at that threshold. So in a uh December sixteenth memo, we provided some options to you, and that included um what you see on the screen. You know, you could reduce the percentage, w- we said to ten percent, but of course it could be a- a- any number um that that you find. You could um you could require the ten percent only at the eighty percent A M I, again, that makes it easier for the development community to provide the units. Um or or again, some combination, uh you could also consider eliminating uh or not applying the requirement to single-family feasible homes. And we did hear from the development community how difficult that is to track, um the changing mortgage conditions, et cetera, so um th- th- tho- that that's really where you are, I mean, i- it may be a long discussion, but but really, the primary issues are not complicated, right? Which is, you know, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta, you have to agree on or or come to some conclusion on a percentage, and then who to apply that percentage to, and what kinds of units.
I have so many problems with this, and I hate it because I I I want us to work toward having more affordable houses, and honestly, like when we started this process months and months and months ago, and we got that round table together and everything else, I was like excited to be able to do this, and I have only become more and more convinced that we're not solving any problems with this, and I'm like I I want it to solve the problem, and it's not, and I um just feel like eh the developers can't build, and people can't get mortgages, and like there's this whole litany of issues, and it feels like these things aren't solving the problem at all, not even like starting to solve it. But um I do think that the idea of the of all the things up here, the eliminating that requirement on the single-family houses, um like so that way if people are putting in ap- apartments, there is some level of affordability, but we want people moving into affordable houses, so.
Yeah.
Um I don't, uh, so all I'm offering right now is I don't like this, but I'm not offering a solution, I am so sorry to say, like could it be more useless, I'm sorry.
I'm just, I'm just gonna echo hers, because uh eh obviously she and I are on the same page tonight, but um I'm the exact same. When we had the the developers in like months ago, I was like, let them figure it out, we just want affordable, you know. And I realized after listening to the developer speak, and to every single Realtor who came to these meetings, they all said, this doesn't solve the problem, and so it worries me that we're we're trying to fix a problem, but we're actually just making things worse. Um and so, uh again, I I absolutely want to get us affordable housing, I absolutely want us to be able to make, you know, so entry-level houses and and not just cheap apartments, I would like to be able to get entry-level houses, I would love something like that. Um but I tend to think we need to send this back to the town and say help with incentive structures, you know, I think that's, I think maybe we can, we can do something, but I really think I don't think this is us, I I think that this is something that should be done at a at a greater level.
We need different tax incentives and other things that are these things.
Yeah, here, let me just re- my, this is a note, Voltaire, the French philosopher, don't let the good become the enemy of perfect.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is good, I hear what you're saying.
I I I have no doubt, this is, this moves the ball down the field.
Okay.
Is it perfect? I don't think so, I mean, in terms of, if you think we can come up with, I think if we sat here till next Tuesday, we couldn't figure out a solution to all the problems with housing. And if we got the Board of Selectmen, everybody else in here still couldn't, it's, it's too big, and it's a cha- it's a changing environment with so much uncertainty, that what we can do is what we can do. And if we wanna say, well, we can't do anything unless everybody's willing to get in there and and do what we want, we don't even know what we want.
I hear what you're saying, Ruth, I just, I worry that in in attempting to do the good, we actually make it worse.
Yeah, I think we're, we're de- we're deterring the developers that we want to come in, um and we're n- we're we're basically like creating an environment where nobody can do anything instead of working toward a so- and thinking we're checking a box that we're not checking, and I'm sorry, Shannon, I interrupted you so.
No, you guys, you're, none of it.
Um, so I just wa- uh wanted to maybe shed a little bit of light without going into complete details on this, but that the Affordable Housing Committee that I'm on, the this is part of our discussion, and I don't we haven't made our full recommendations um to the Board of Selectmen yet, but my suggestion with that in mind would be that maybe we table this until some other actions are taken.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the.
Just one question before uh speak Tucker, when, how long do you wanna pass this sit on this?
What, me?
No.
No, me.
Yeah, that's act.
Three months.
Three months.
So, for for context, I I I worked on the the work-live-ride legislation last year, um and at its, it which included a- affordable, it included inclusionary zoning. Fifteen percent was the absolute highest percentage that 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 legislation went for, so you're talking like Greenwich, you're talking all all, like the the very wealthiest towns would have to had you fifteen percent inclusionary zoning. However, projects that hit that fifteen percent were as of right, and there was increased state funding for those areas. So even 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 desegregated C T, who's all about the affordable housing, would have, would consider this to be u- unworkable. It it without, it's some it's some extremely powerful incentives, there's of course being if you make it fifteen, you just build, that's a humongous incentive for for this rate, and so, for a- again, for a Greenwich. So e- even in in a very wealthy town, but not Greenwich level like Simsbury, that number is massive. That is way too high without some serious, without some serious incentives, be they tax or process, and I know we've talked about that.
You took it, bro.
The fifteen percent, it's in the draft.
Yes, sir, um fifteen percent in the draft is just, it that number, like they came down below that number, because they realized. That that's a possibility.
Reduce it to ten percent.
You you could, um you could, you could bring it higher and include bonuses, you could do it in certain areas.
Give some thought, further thoughts specifically, what's up there? And and not worry so much about Greenwich and other things.
Yeah.
But I understand those are good points of illustration, but my my suggestion that we not lose sight of, you know, some positive steps, is yeah, the percentages are up up to us, and we just throw our hands up and say, we'll come back in ninety days, I'm not sure that really you know, gets, I mean, we could say that they're not, they're not for votes, right?
I just say, I mean, I, but I I don't know that that's the case. Broadly speaking, I agree with um Joe speaking with this, but I also appreciate the challenges that have been raised by Tucker and Kate and Diane, and I think we need to take those seriously. I don't wanna pass something that uh I'm not fairly confident is gonna be successful, and I think it's drafted, uh I don't think this would be successful, so I would like to give this some more thought, uh and maybe do as Tucker suggested, look at reducing those numbers, the percentages, um or.
Or increasing the incentive.
Or increasing the incentives, I I just think that, you know, without some additional thought and detailed work, I don't think we're gonna, we're gonna pass something that's gonna give you a chance of being successful.
There there is new, there's new work-live-ride legislation this year, I haven't seen all the updated numbers, but they've they would have done a lot of research as well, so we can take a look at what the new numbers are even for Simsbury on that to see what, and again, that's heavy incentives, see where they would have put, I I bet I if I had to guess, would be at like twelve, with with all the incentives. Um so maybe take a look at some of the legislation.
Who's funding this?
So the the incentives were, eh eh well, they're unfunded, they're um processed, like certain things would be as of right, certain things would be so so again, like, the incentive being that the developer knows that if they follow the rules, it gets approved, right? So that's lawyer's fees, getting getting financing, all that goes in free to the town, but of course, you have to consider that you know, what have we talked about all day today, I mean, that people like their public hearings, and you know, yeah. So I mean, that's that's the drawback, right, I mean, well, so what some would consider a drawback, but yeah.
We do need to look at, I do think we need to look at incentives to get the right kinds of developers here to do a really nice job that makes people happy in town, and I mean, people who live in the developments, people who are their neighbors, to make everything, we we do need to have incentives to get developers here, building the right kinds of developments, um and we also don't want people to be investing in homes that they can't actually use to carry themselves upward, right? And we, so, yeah, I really struggle with how this solves, but I also don't see Simsbury-Tucker ever getting to a point where developers have complete as-of-right control when they hit certain, I mean, I just ca- I can't see that being something that's gonna support us, and like when you look at parking reductions and density bonuses, to me like I know that parking can be like pretty, pretty intense on these things, but at the same time we are entirely a drivable, like we are a driving community, and even when the affordability happens because of our proximity to anything, a a car is still part, has to be part of people's lives, like people aren't going to not have cars.
Right, well, I mean, the
In Simsbury, I don't think.
The legislation I was talking about was for areas around high-quality transit, which we have some transit, but certainly not the highest quality.
Do not have high-quality or useful transit, and I mean while that might improve some, I can't imagine it impro- it's not gonna significantly improve, because our location is just not a location where we're going.
Yeah, we, I mean, our our density bonuses, our 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 density has to take into consideration the transit, or else you create I mean, you create car dependency, I totally understand, right, um and so long as we can continue to upgrade our transit system, but uh you know, I mean, eh I, the single-family fee el- elimination, I I don't see single-family homes as a viable uh a- affordable housing option for most people, I think single-family is simply uh it 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 the the days of the affordable single-family, I think are probably behind us for the most part. I think duplexes, I think other things are are easy, but I don't think we're gonna get it with single-family.
But I think having a a mixture, like i- i- it's not going to, a single-family house isn't going to be as affordable as a duplex, but it's certainly a place where people can buy in at a reasonable rate, and that, so maybe they buy in a duplex, then they move to a smaller, not you know, six thousand square foot house, and then that opens the duplex up for another person, you know.
Potentially, yeah.
Part of the growth structure, it's still affordable, it's not gonna be affordable, capital A. Without subsidy.
But if we look at at the deficiencies that we have now, with affordable housing, you know, based on the thing that was in the P O C D, or no, uh in the Affordable Housing Plan, um we're something like five hundred affordable housing, even that's short of the ten percent goal. And so, if you if you look at, you know, if if we use ten percent um affordable for a development, you know, with, if somebody wants to build fifty multi-family units, and ten percent of them are gonna be affordable, that ten percent only ensures that the fifty units don't worsen our position in terms of the shortage.
They still do worsen our, I mean.
But it it does nothing for the five hundred that we're already short, and the thing is that when you start doing the math, you can't, I mean, I don't think that we can forecast far enough out that we might get this done with single-family homes. So, what we need to really focus on is multi-family, encouraging multi-family, and I I know that sounds kind of silly, because I just said, you know, Simsbury is kind of out of, you know, at this point available land, significant portions of available land, but um we're not gonna get to ten percent on on one house at a time kind of stuff, so I think it's a great idea to drop the single-family home out of a a concern here, and I'm fine with it.
I don't think we're gonna get there with ten percent of, we're not, none of the, I guess my problem is, none of this gets us there, we have to like we have to like more than double our population in the town in order to remotely get there in at twenty or thirty percent, let alone at ten percent, like this is never, this and that are two different things. So, to me, it's less about, like, what percentage of our total housing population do we have that's affordable, and more about how are we making this a better community for people to be able to afford to live? And I don't think, I mean, even though I know the state's holding us to a numbers game, I don't think we can, I don't think we can play that numbers game and ever win.
Yeah, I know, I really do feel.
You know what I mean, so I think we have to think about what's the, what's making us a more vibrant community that has opportunity for people, to me, that's the ultimate goal, because we can't sit and play numbers games and think we're ever gonna meet any of that, at the rate that you'd have to build to support it, you just can't. We can't sustain it.
So then what is our objective, it's not to comply with the
Well, it's.
No, but it's to to explore in a. I I feel like.
Do what we think is the right thing.
Yes.
Tracking.
Yeah.
Upgrade citizens and and good kids and all that.
Um, well, uh uh it, uh not upgrade citizens and good kids, I mean, yeah, of course, every community wants that, right? We don't wanna not have that, but I don't, but I think what we're trying to offer is the ability for people to come into the community and live here in an affordable way, but I just don't think we can play a numbers game and try to beat the state out.
But and and not to mention.
Well, you know, bear in mind, this isn't those, but it's not a goal of zoning regulation in the state of Connecticut to ensure maximum profitability for developers.
But they need to be able to get a loan, they need to be able to actually process the develop.
Right, but we don't con- we don't control the banking industry, interest rates move around, and you know.
Yeah, but you know, for instance, the whole thing with the hu- with the um with the forty-year deeded deed, you know, the whatever requirement.
Need research.
Eh d- thank you, everything, everything I'm hearing is that actually works against the homeowner, so we don't wanna penalize the fo- the our our residents. Again, I just think these are all good ideas, but they're short-sighted, I think the solution is much bigger than this. And I think just doing this without having a bigger conversation, perhaps with what Shannon's talking about, perhaps working with, you know, the 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 Board of Selectmen and just, and in the town on a grader, I just I think doing a little something, just so we can say we did something, I'd rather wait and do something a little bit better that's taking into account, so I I wouldn't mean.
Don't don't misinterpret what I said, it's just do something so we can say we did something. No, no, no one cares about.
No, I I recognize what you you're trying to do here.
We're trying to make a positive impact.
Yeah.
So the extent that we're empowered to, we, we can always find reasons to do nothing. We could put this off for six months, ninety days, a hundred and eighty days, till next year, I mean.
But I feel like this deters the developers that we would want to be talking to about some of the other things that we just.
No, but we we acknowledge that some of what they gave us as input was very helpful.
I think Shannon wants to say something.
So we have another Affordable Housing meeting on Wednesday, okay, um, wh- the purv- The purview of of how we incentivize developers does not lie in this board. That is the board of selectmen. For for that reason. Can we wait to see what happens on Wednesday? To allow some direction, is that fair, George, do you think, can you answer that question?
Yeah, it's.
I mean, I don't, I can't predict.
Something on Wednesday or in, like, are you thinking that the conversation's gonna go a certain way on Wednesday, that's gonna provide more information to us?
Uh we are very close to making our recommendations.
I would be open to that, I think that's a bigger.
I think everyone is in agreement that we put this off.
I mean, no pressure.
The the only thing I wanted to just just add, this is not, again, not advocacy, I think I had said it, I've said it previously. That ten percent sh- isn't isn't a goal. For for the reasons that Kate really articulated, the the number, it's a numbers game that doesn't work. But that doesn't mean that incremental additions of below market units aren't helpful to the community.
Yeah.
Um but one thing I think I said in in December was, remember at least the last two applications we had had, we had. Um even though that we have, we you have heard from the development community how difficult it is to provide this. The Hartford South application proposed fifteen percent before we even, now again, each developer has lots of reasons. A- a- as did the last application before that, which was Mr. Giorgio's application, who offered ten percent, so.
I don't wanna.
Then that's helpful, thanks.
That that that's all, I mean, and the the incremental addition. Of below market units is help, even if you say, if you have fifty units and five of them are affordable, again. Talk about rental property now really, cause cause it comes to some inclusion, those five units are valuable to folks who can't afford market rate. That's all.
Yeah.
Yes, I I don't wanna put like, you know, this expectation on our. A- advisory commission that we're gonna come up with this magical solution, because we're not, we're we're coming up with recommendations, but I. My issue with this from the beginning has been, I don't think we have enough information. I I I totally support not throwing out the baby with the bath water analogies, um. But I I just don't think this does it. This does not accomplish what we want it to accomplish, I don't think.
And yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, if you if you build no, if you build no units, you're not built anymore affordability. Uh that's that's my concern with where we're at.
So can we wait a a month and, you know, can we come back to this next month?
I would like to come back to this next, I don't think that we need to wait three months, I'd like to connect with next month's month and and we'll have more information on the table then.
Decide where to go from there, yeah.
I think so, and I think then.
Well, yeah, let's remember that this. We own this.
Yeah, it's ours, we don't have to, yeah, yeah.
All we can say is we're gonna give this up until the morning. Whenever that happens.
Yeah.
Another effort within the.
You know, there were.
I don't know that we're gonna get some book information, actionable stuff.
A- absolutely, so let's say, so let's say we don't in a month, then we can have another discussion.
Yeah, and you know. There were, if there were to be, you know, or selectman members, be able to take this information back or his left and maybe.
Well, just that I think we should be make, that this this isn't just a zoning board issue. And I think it needs to be a joint effort amongst multiple groups and. We need to make sure that everybody, like all of that is coming together in a so, like in a holistic solution. And not like, well, we thought this would help, so we're gonna do this and then they think X Y Z would help and then all of a sudden you have a bunch of things that aren't meshing together. So if we really think that we could get to a point where there is some sort of more holistic. Information or plan, then I would be really in favor of doing that, um I don't think we can vote on it today. But also if we think we're never going to actually have more information. Then I'd be favor in favor of us figuring out a certain like point to kind of draw a line in the sand and make some decisions. Cause I don't wanna sit around forever, think like in our paralysis, but I do think it doesn't have to be tonight right now. That's all I have.
Okay, does somebody wanna make a motion about the.
Do we need to make a motion?
Do we need to, do we need to make a motion or we just don't act, do we not?
Uh you you don't need to make a motion unless you specifically wanna place it on the agenda of another meeting. For your own, I mean, you could do, you could do that, you you certainly, you could, you could, you could move discussion to your February. Next meeting, it's ordered March.
March third?
Yes.
Sure. Motion to move further discussion on this topic until the March third regular meeting.
I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, is there any other comments, questions, discussion? Okay, then, we have a motion on the table to. Cease discussion tonight and resume on, what was it, March third?
March third.
March third.
March third at seven o'clock. At our regular scheduled meeting. And so there was a motion and a second, any other comments, concerns, then we're ready for a vote, all in favor. Continuing to March third, we say aye, and those opposed, nay, the two nays, so. That's it, we're we're going for March third to this topic continuation. That isn't adjournment meeting, that's.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one thing to ask you to do because um I figured it would warn, it it would have warned everybody out. If you look on your last page, there is a a kind of a a a a secondary tertiary motion I'd like you to make. Based on the decision tonight, we didn't include a kind of a finding of consistency with the P O C D in your previous findings, so. I I do think that that makes sense to do and I I think we ought to do that. Just 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 make, uh you know, with the text amendment you've approved tonight, that that portion there, I am. Um that you find them consistent with the P O C D, I think it's. We would normally have put that in, but but since you were doing four different motions. Think you make the finding at once, understand what I'm saying?
We would have to do this again after the, if they they made some action on the inclusionary as well.
Yeah, you will.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
So we would just include the three that's.
Say not inc- including the inclusionary portion.
Yeah.
You can make that motion.
Well, we didn't approve.
Correct.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's a good, somebody could make that motion.
Uh is there a number associated with that, yeah, uh oh no, there's not, so just not including the inclusionary zone.
You don't need to say, they, you know, I don't think you have to say, just the ones that you've adopted, and the ones that we adopted.
Approved this evening, you're right, okay, so I move that the zoning commission find that the text amendments found in Z C twenty four dash oh six. Housing Strategies Cool Toolkit and approve this evening. Um second of February twenty twenty five are consistent with the housing policies found in the plan of conservation and development P O C D. Chapter nine addressing housing needs and specifically implements action steps identified in the P O C D.
It's the third, December third, my bad.
It sure is, on February, sure.
Holy Mary.
Is there, that's the motion, is there a second? And uh any further discussion or comments? Then we're we're ready for a vote, all in favor, say aye please, and those opposed, nay. It's a unanimous uh adoption. So, did you have something, that was.
That was it. We're targeting this, I don't have anything else to offer.
Get a motion to adjourn.
I'll move, oh, sorry. I will move to adjourn.
In a second, second, Tony, okay, uh all in favor on adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay, adjournment was unanimous in eight forty four.